Well, I want to call our meeting back to order. Dr. Banakowski, thank you for that presentation. And covered a lot of ground there in a short period of time. We appreciate that. So with this, we're going to open the floor for questions of staff or Dr. All or comments regarding what we've seen. And so the floor is open. Either that or it'll be a very short night. Dr. Banakowski, one of my questions is, how do we see the potential of moving the ninth grade to the high school affecting the 21st century programs?
Dr. Sanders and Dr. Shurik have had conversations already on the 21st century programs with the facilitators because they're interested in this conversation. I think initially I was thinking that they would still want to have only a 10, 11, and 12 program for 21st century. But I think loud and clear, and Dr. Sanders could add to this, loud and clear was that, you know, we're trying to already fit a three, a four-year program into three years. There have been challenges for our 21st century program. And we would like to see that these students have the opportunity for a four-year, which is what really what more logistically appropriate for this, for the 21st century program. I think we would also, again, we haven't built the specifics, but we'd have to look at also making opportunity for students who would decide later to be able to join a 21st century program. So we'd have to look at modification, which we've already done. Dr. Sanders, would you like to add anything to that?
No, I don't think so.
Her prerogative.
Okay, thank you.
I think that was a good question to ask because I've heard comments from parents who have students in the 21st century programs that they wish that the students had had four years to complete those programs. That it did kind of jam up their schedules and they would have appreciated being to, able to spread those out. So I think that is an excellent question to ask.
Dr. Banakowski, I assume that you've been in contact or somebody has with the Association of Middle Schools or whatever it's called. I think there's some official association of the middle schools nationwide. And in that process, is there, has there, is there more information that we can uncover from the experience of all these middle school principals and all of that? Or, I guess I'm wondering, overarching question, as we take a look at this, have there ever been schools who once they've gone to this configuration, have gone back? And if so, why? And what do they see as some of the strengths and some of the weaknesses if we haven't covered those already in our other research?
Well, certainly in our research, we looked very much at the National Middle School Association and the middle school principals and junior high principals who served on the committee. Dr. Hyman was a resource to our committee. It thoroughly looked at the pros and cons of that decision. But we certainly, one thing we have not investigated and we will write down is if any schools went to that and changed back. I'm not aware of those, but you know, you have to kind of dig sometimes to find that out. So many of the schools in the United States are organized six, seven, eight, five, six, seven, eight, with the large number there, that we'd have to take a look and see if there was any that went back. I would say, of course, the ones that went from maybe a six, seven, eight to a K8 might be an example of one. As far as going to the National Middle School Conversation, Convention Conference, they have a wealth of literature and information. I was on a website the other day and I was actually seeing a 360 panorama of a middle school. And that was very interesting. A little different flavor from a six, eight school versus a six, nine school. Few more bulletin boards, a few things. But both Stacy Yerkovich, Principal Prairie Trail, and Larry Katsev from California Trail have recently come back actually from the National Middle School Conference and were particularly interested in finding out information about this particular area. I know either of them would just love to be called up to the microphone spontaneously and to share. But I would be correct in saying they were excited to come back and to share information. Anything either of you would like to add? At the microphone?
As they both are walking up here, another thought I had, have there been schools in the last decade or so, or less, who have made this switch? And what are their thoughts looking back? If they've done this five years ago, six years ago, what were some of the challenges they faced, some of the issues and how they were addressed? And if they had a chance to do it again, would they do it again?
For both the sixth move to a six, seven, eight and the ninth move to a nine, 12, we have some examples, not too many because the number of schools did it more, some 20 years ago. But as you said, we wanted to look at somebody recent that is making that change. And we've been trying to look and study at those. We have one here in Kansas that's making a nine, 12 change, one in Oklahoma. And actually, we've done some visiting at that school district as well. So we're trying to get, learn from other people's experiences so that will help us in our experience in decision-making.
And Dr. Banakowski, before you start, are those part of the benchmark districts that we're utilizing currently?
Only one of the benchmark districts, and someone's going to help me with this, Edmund, can actually is currently a six, seven, eight, but went through it not too long ago. And I'm not recalling, has anybody recalled that, recalled that off top? It wasn't that long ago that they may, had made some changes. So that is one of our benchmark schools. Most of our benchmark schools have that organizational pattern. We can look at them. Not aware of anyone making a recent change in that. Dr. George, Dr. All?
Well, Edmund in Oklahoma, they're, they're working on a leadership, I meant, Leadership of Freshmen Academy approach there of, of what their ninth grade. And so they're in the process of change.
Yes.
And the Seaman School District in Topeka is in the process of change, of moving ninth grade.
Yes.
There are not very many left in Kansas, but there's, there's a few doing that. So we have some connections of people in, currently, not necessarily going back, but currently in the process of change that, that have been more recent that we could take a look at.
I think Dr. Drummond brings up an excellent point. And I would like to see that data. And to me, what's even probably more valuable are the schools that have done it some time ago and whether that means five or six years ago. Because you'd like to see what the results have been, particularly with the concern about the whole implementation factor, more so even than those schools that are just on the cusp of doing or in the process. Certainly, we'd like to see that as well. I always think that there's an opportunity for tremendous process improvement that we need to learn from. And those learnings need to be indicative of, is this the right decision or is this something that maybe we want to move a different direction on?
And we could certainly look at that. Always a challenge with getting common data to do that comparison. But some things that we can look at, things that are difficult to look at as anything before high school type assessment information because our state assessments are different for every state. But we can look at that because certainly, as we've done a lot of our implementation of, for example, Read 180, right now, we're in the pilot of that six, seven, eight math change. We've been going out to the, to local school districts, Blue Valley and Kansas City, Kansas, to learn from their experiences because they implemented before we did to see what a change helped on their achievement scores. And they're in Kansas, so that's been helpful. But that's a great thing. And I know Laura Lee's taking notes on that.
And when I talk about data, part of what I'm looking for is just their lessons learned.
Yeah.
You know, just the list of things. If they had to do it all over again, what would they do differently? What worked, what didn't work? What were the regrets? You know, whatever it may be.
Even process measures.
Process improvements, you know, mainly is what I'm focused on.
Okay, good.
Are valuable pieces of information that we can learn from.
Valuable, great.
Dr. Banakowski? Go ahead, Stacy, and then I'll come back. My question.
Before I forget my response, thank you. A couple of things. As Allison said, we did just go to the NMSA, National Middle School Association Conference, Nationwide Conference. And as Allison also indicated, most schools who made this change did so 15, 20 years ago. So we are unique in that we're just talking about it now. The session, I did not interact and haven't interacted with a school who is looking to go back for, for many of the reasons that we're now making the change. The developmental piece with sixth graders through eighth graders being more closely developmentally associated, the opportunities for, for ninth graders at the high school. There were some discussions at this conference, a couple of sessions, and Jim McMullen was also there, as was a counselor from Santa Fe Trail, Cindy Hay. And all of us kind of hit upon, at one point or another, a discussion of a K8 configuration, which was interesting to us in, in this middle level. In those sessions, however, the discussion has surfaced with the K8 because of the transition piece, avoiding a transition for kids because it is a challenging time for kids and for parents. In those discussions, they also presented research and one that I was in, a Dr. Paul George from Florida and, and a woman working with him, that in fact, the research showed that the time spent upfront with the transition was the key to making the transition successful. And the suggestion earlier this evening that we kind of put something, put a picture to that, Larry and I, at the break, talked a little bit about that as well. I would say, just today, I actually visited Logan Junior High in the Seaman School District. And they are building or moving their ninth grade to the high school. And wanting the, the school administrators and teachers are wanting to move that sixth grade to their junior high to that middle level. And there's still some discussion going on around that. At the conference, and, and we have been visiting, as Allison said, some schools, some benchmark schools, other schools in the Midwest, middle schools to look at their programs and what are the strengths of their programs with six, seven, eight. And a part of that discussion is to talk about what kinds of things did you do as you moved from a K6, 7, 9 configuration to K5, 6, 8? And honestly, when we talk about the things we've done in our community, education-wise, for staff, for parents, for community, conversations, the time that we are putting in upfront, schools and people from those schools are amazed that, that we have done this and that we continue to do this. It was, in most situations, a case where it was a decision made and then it happened with, with very little input in the design. And, and I, I can speak a little bit to that, having raised my own kids in a district near here. And I remember the process when that district went through that change. So I, I think the board is to be commended in the leadership shown and, and the challenge that you've placed on, on those of us who were a part of the bond task force to put that work in upfront and involve people in the process. And the piece with looking at how, how are schools evaluating the, the success and are there things they wish they had done differently? We'll continue to pursue that. We have some other districts that we're going to visit and that, as I said, is a part of our conversation with those people.
You know, in concert with that, we focus a lot on Baldridge and for good reasons. And it's been around now for going on its 20th year. It'd be interesting to know, have any of the award winners been schools that have gone through that transition? And I think that would probably be a fairly easy query to make with them.
Certainly it is.
There is. And, and there actually is a school district that's on our list in Tulsa that is a Baldridge award winner. And we haven't visited there yet, but that is one that's on our list.
James?
Yeah.
I just want to add, far as the conference was concerned, I went to a really excellent workshop on transitioning sixth graders to the middle level. And I think we're doing a lot of those things. But I also believe that with our junior high principals' think tank, that we're, we need to look at the relationships we want to build with our elementary feeder schools and their parents, not just our students and staff, but our parents are really key to understanding what we want to do in the junior highs, what we're achieving. And also educate them on the social, emotional issues that we deal with daily in the junior high and how we plan to look at that and what adjustments that we can make at the junior high when we, when we would go to a sixth through eighth configuration. Some of those things we want to try now with our seventh graders. And so I think that's really key. Another workshop I went to that, I didn't get a lot of information there, but I emailed the presenter and got the information sent to me and ordered some materials regarding that. And that had to do with scheduling options in middle-level education because I think we need to think out of the box if, if and when we create a design team on the junior highs of the future to look at scheduling options that also address the social, emotional needs as well as academic needs of our students, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, not just sixth graders. So I, it was a very valuable conference. And it also gave us time to reflect between our workshops and discuss some of these issues and on, you know, in the airport. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmar. In regards to the, the transition and what Stacy said was time spent upfront is critical in the transition. And in reading some of the parents' comments, need extensive preparation for this transition if we decide to make the transition, certainly. For me, I'd like to take, I'd like to make a field trip.
Field trip.
I do bet, no, I like the data, but I think it's important for, to get on the ground and to experience it and to visit with board members and parents and community and students and staff. So for myself, I would like to take a trip to Edmund, Oklahoma, and, because they're going through the transition currently, and take a couple of days and go down. Is that, is that, is that doable? And maybe another board member would like to go along and just look at it from, from the real standpoint of this is how it works in the real world.
I think that'd be great.
I think, I think that's very doable. And we might really look around to see who else might be at maybe a completed stage of the process. Edmund may be looking at one design and see if we can look at another alternative or a recent alternative. And if we can't do too many field trips, pick one or two. And then also get you some more descriptive information from those, as Mr. Churchman said, that have been through the process and lessons learned. So we, I think we could put something together there and give some options for the board members on that.
There's a really good program in Hawaii. Sorry, a little humor.
I was going to volunteer for that one.
I knew you were. Me too.
You mentioned in, you know, some of your previous remarks about a ninth grade academy. Now, I know teams would have to be put together and a lot of stuff done if we made the decision. A lot of work would have to go into that. But could you just kind of briefly describe what that means? Just summarize what, what that's all about? And then a second follow-up question is, is there something similar anticipated for the sixth graders that would be moving up to the middle level?
Actually, as I've looked at it, and I'm sure we have, we have much more research and questioning to do, the term ninth grade academy is used in a variety of different ways by different people. I've, I've seen ninth grade academies where it's simply that ninth graders have an option to kind of be together for some of their core classes, which they most likely, many of them would have. And they're all together for social studies and they're mostly ninth graders in the classes. And they do some special activities. They have a transition program where they have mentoring by the sophomores, what it's like. And so to me, that, well, that's not much different that you would think would always happen in a ninth grade program in a high school. And they called it a ninth grade academy. Probably had shirts with the logo on them. Where, and then some people that a ninth grade academy actually means a ninth grade center and is totally separated from the high school. So I think we'd have to define and look more thoroughly at what other people are defining as the ninth grade academy is not one thing. And we heard a conversation about the ninth grade academy with one of our benchmark districts. And so it seems anywhere in between both of those choices, certainly a ninth grade academy has some positive aspects to it. There's also, we want to card against some of the concerns that the high school principals, Dr. Sanders also talked about when we had another conversation group, that we also don't want to put a big target on a ninth grade student, say, oh, there's the ninth graders. And also, we don't want to put ceilings on them because one of the reasons we want is to expand opportunities and so that there is that flexibility. So it's somewhere in between balancing both of those aspects. And that's why, as some of you have suggested, the, right now, we've been in these little conversation stages, but we haven't been able to sit down with a design team and really build something, at least a little more definitive to a something. Dr. Gosin, I don't think he's here this evening, so I can talk about him. But seriously, he gave an example. It's like we've sighted land and we kind of see the outline of the land and we're kind of looking, we see some trees and things, but we're going to need to get a little bit closer to the land to see if we want to land our boat there. And I thought it was an excellent analogy of kind of where we're at a little bit. So that's my description of a ninth grade academy.
Speaking of landing boats, I have a boat analogy.
Yes, Mr. Parker, okay.
And this, and as a board member, this is my concern. This is not a jet ski down in Hillsdale Lake that we can just turn around on a dime. It's more like a aircraft carrier in the middle of an ocean. And it takes a long time to turn it around. And if we turn it around and we didn't turn it in the right direction, we got a big problem. So from, as a, from a board member's perspective, it's, it's imperative that we, we look at this thing and we, we look at it every way we can possibly look at it. Because if we turn the ship around and we say, oops, that was a mistake, it's, it's nearly impossible to turn it back around again or it's going to take a long time. And we lose a lot of momentum in the process. And we have, we have, we have AYP that we need to be concerned about and we have budgetary issues. So, so all of those things, we have growth issues and
That's right.
A lot of challenges. And so we just have to make sure that this is the right one. So frankly, that's why I'd like to get on the ground and look at some school districts that have done this and say,
Let's see what's
Tell us what worked and what didn't work.
Get to the, the real people.
Yeah. Did you get the ship turned around and did you turn it in the right direction?
And would you have made that same decision? I think as we've approached many changes we've made, it is a little scary sometimes. Another boat decision analogy.
Mr. Churchman here is, is, must have been at Seaman. Takes 14 miles to turn around an aircraft carrier.
Oh.
Little bit of free information.
Yeah. For our next party.
Dr. Banakowski, isn't the reality also that it, we can talk about sixth and ninth grade, and this has probably been said, but the reality is that it really does impact sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and it also impacts ninth through 12. Because anytime you're talking about a rigorous program and looking at the challenges that you want to put before students to advance their learning, it will impact the other programs in each of these other grade levels. Is that correct?
I think that is one of the reasons, as we looked at this, and I never forget Kathleen Willhide, a math teacher in our district, who was on the committee, talking about the importance of what you do in sixth grade has such an impact on what you do in 12th grade in mathematics. And she brought forth that example. So certainly there is an impact achievement-wise, academic-wise, that we looked at that would be important as we look at that whole picture. I also think, and you may have been going also here, that sixth, seventh, and eighth in particular, I think in our mind, we continually think seven, eight, nine. We think of a middle school seven, eight, and nine. And it's hard for us to think, what would a six, seven, eight building be like? And I think as Mr. Parker brings up, that that's a change of that whole setting, in a sense, changes the flavor of that setting. And that's why we need to look at that. But it does have impact wide. I could, I may call on somebody else.
Banakowski, just, just stay there.
Yeah, I see that. I was trying to sit down a little bit.
When I look back, Dr. Banakowski, most of the major changes we've made throughout the district across the past many years I've been on the board, we have not only gone through the process we're going through now and look at disadvantages, advantages, scoped out other school districts, went and took a look at national literature and research and practices and all those kinds of things, 21st century program, even when we changed the high school schedules. I mean, the list just goes on of, of how we've done our due diligence in this process. But one component that we did on some occasions, I think 21st century program does certainly stand in some on the high school schedule and others, is that we did some spade work in terms of what the design would look like. And what I mean by that is we've created, by we, I mean the community, including the staff and the board and others, have created a lot of questions and a lot of thoughts regarding what would happen if this and what's, what impact is this going to have? And you've heard that again tonight. And I think it's one thing to consult others that have gone through this, which I think we should, and I think Mr. Parker had a great idea and Mr. Churchman and, and others regarding doing what we've said tonight. But I, I think for us as a board, for this board member in particular, I think it would be important to have a fuller understanding of what the Olathe wave would look like in terms, if we, if we were to make this change, not only how would we address these issues, but how would this look? I mean, what would the design look like for six, seven, eight, for one through five, for nine through 12? Curricular, psychosocial, support groups, you know, the whole litany of things. Until I have that more firmly in my thinking and my understanding, it would be difficult for me to vote with any degree of intelligence up or down on this process. So it just seems to me for us to at least have a, more than a snapshot, but certainly not a full-blown design. From that perspective, would be very, very helpful for me to better answer the questions that are being asked to me by community members and others, as well as for me to have some level of comfort that, that we won't even consider what I said several minutes ago, and that is look back and say, oops, you know, we shouldn't have done that. And that has particular implications for us because if in fact we do this, it's just now switching grades around, it's a lot of construction cost and, you know, a whole bunch of investment financially and staff-wise. It's a monumental change for this district if we would go forward with this. So in order to have some degree of comfort, you know, not exact science here, but some degree of comfort, it seems to me that at least for this board member to have a fuller understanding of what this might look like and how we would be addressing all these various questions we've created and other questions I think we will create by making site visits and by doing more research and those kinds of things. So all that to say is if we could in the months ahead, you know, I know we don't want to push this too far out, but it's going to take time, I know, to be able to capture this a little better so that at least I could understand more and explain to parents more, you know, what are we really doing here?
I feel a little like we're, if we were coming forth with you, what we did a number of years ago, to go to a block scheduling at the high school in 1999, and we had come to you and said, we, there's great benefits to changing the schedule. We've talked with other districts, we've done some research. We're not quite sure what ours is going to look like, but we're going to have one. And it's either going to be a full block or it's going to be a modified block or maybe it's going to, and we haven't been able to flush that piece out to come with you. Not that we haven't tweaked, we have tweaked that block schedule that you finally approved in 1999, that you approved in 1999. But we had a structure in place to begin the process for that year and to move it forward. And we are a little at a disadvantage because even when parents are asking me, are you going to have teaming for sixth grade? I think we might, you know? I can say what the research says about teaming and pieces. And we have a lot of people on those green sheets that have volunteered to be on design teams.
Thank you.
I think that would be a good plan because I've had, just in the last week, I've visited a few site council meetings and I've had parents say to me, you know, we're, we're interested in moving forward with this reconfiguration, but it would be helpful to us to be able to visualize this and have some more details. So I think all of those, those points that Dr. Drummond made are, are good points and would help put some, some meat to it and also increase the comfort level of those parents. They say, you know, in theory, this all sounds really good, but could you give us a few more specifics about what you have in mind and how this might look for my child?
And for staff as well. You know, because we've met with many staff members that will be greatly impacted, who are also parents and residents, many of them. But also, this is their position that might change. So it's of great interest to them as well.
I'd like to share some reflections and build upon what Ms. Ashley said and what Dr. Drummond said. And I want to go back to Tuesday night. I had the opportunity to, and these reflections are for the board and certainly for the people in the room here, had the opportunity to attend a site council meeting and Mr. Katsev was involved. And I have a great deal of respect was involved, and I have a great deal of respect for Larry. And it was a very, what I'll call spirited discussion. And it reminded me of, as we've talked about quotes tonight, Gandhi once said, "It is from disagreement that the path to consensus starts." And I think that's extremely appropriate. And during the discussion, there were a lot of points that were exchanged, and we talked about the fact, or I talked about the fact, that there's a lot of good things going on in the Olathe School District, and the fact that we have the opportunity to have this kind of a discussion versus a discussion on where to make cuts or where to close schools or where to cut back on staff is just an indication of how fortunate we are here in this district. We look across the landscape, and we have recently the Kansas Teacher of the Year, we have the Biology Teacher of the Year in Kansas, two Blue Ribbon Certified Schools, just to name a few of the great things that are going on in this district. Still, I think, though, we have to ask a lot of questions, there are a lot of questions that remain to be answered. And in my mind, you know, I don't know if, when we talk about sixth and ninth grade, if it's the right thing to do, I don't know if not doing it is the wrong thing to do. I am confident that whatever transpires, the community and the district will make the right choice and will do the right thing. But we still have a ways to go. I think we can look here recently and see some history, we can even go back nine months and see some history where clearly the public says things that they can't relate to, that they don't understand what's in it for them, they're not going to support. We can look at the fact that there's data that says that there are people that are overwhelmingly in support of this, there's data that says there's people that are very hesitant about this. And I don't think it would be right to sit and reflect upon any one of those data points and say that's the answer, because both of those populations are relatively minute in the grand scheme of things across the overall district. And the challenge at hand is, in my mind, to measure twice and cut once. Whatever it is that we do and we go forward with, we need to do it one time. I think that's extremely important. And it's important that we talk frequently about the Olathe Way, and the Olathe Way has always adhered itself to the fact that it doesn't follow what is considered to be the norm. You know, certainly, we can find statistics that say that ninth through 12th is the way to go, but that hasn't been the Olathe Way. Does that mean that it's right or wrong? I don't believe so. But we can't abandon the Olathe Way. We can't abandon the fact that we've placed a premium on neighborhood schools and smaller schools, and what will result from going in a direction that may deviate from that to a certain degree? We need to understand that. We also need to understand that we've got to be data-driven, and we talk quite frequently about the fact that we're data-driven. And in my mind, there's a, you know, there's an inherent skepticism on everything, not just this issue, and what brings me that comfort level is seeing the data. I have no doubts in my mind that making this change will bring tremendous benefits to the district. We've seen a lot of those tonight. But there's always the devil in the detail around the implementation. And the question that I grapple with, and I know many parents are grappling with this, and many people in the community who will ask the question, what's in it for me, will grapple with that same question, is what is the benefit to be gained by doing it versus the benefit of not doing it? And during our meeting on Tuesday night, Mr. Katz have clearly said that regardless of which way we go, changes need to be made, and I believe that's absolutely right. Changes will need to be made, we can never remain standing still. And so where I am at the moment is a need to see the data, and the data is comprised of a number of different attributes, certainly balanced scorecard data. I think it's incumbent upon us to say, what is the value that we're going to get that we can wrap our hands around? I think the data also consists of, what have we learned from other changes such as this? What have we learned from school districts in Johnson County that have recently had bond initiatives fail? What have we learned from the other initiatives that have gone before the taxpayers that have failed recently as well? And I think one of the resounding themes that I've been able to find is when the community says, I feel like I'm being sold something that I can't relate to. I can't put the what's in it for me in my mind. And so these are questions that may make some bristle, but I think at the end of the day, I'm confident that we're all striving for the same goal, and it's how do we get there? And so to me, we have a ways to go. We've got unanswered questions that haven't been resolved, and that's not a criticism, it's a reality. But we need to get there. And we have to understand that people that have seen the presentation don't comprise the voting population necessarily of this community. People that are for it don't comprise that, people that are against it don't comprise that. To me, success in this bond, whatever it looks like, will be an overwhelming majority of the community that gives its affirmation that they're behind what it is we want to do. And I think we've got a ways to go to get there.
Mr. Churchman, well said. Another way is people are down on what they're not up on. And I agree, and I think Dr. Drummond and Ms. Ashley and Mr. Churchman all made good points, and to that, we just have more work to do. And I'd like staff to take that, and Dr. All, and begin putting some framework around that, and execution. We can have all the plans in the world, but we have to execute here. And so what does the execution look like? What does the plan look like? How are we going to execute this thing? Because we've already reiterated that it's a critical decision, and we have to execute. We have to.
If I could just build on that for one instance, I told Dr. Banikowski, tonight was the first time that I've heard openly, what are the disadvantages? And once again, that's not a criticism, but people need to hear that. They need to see a level of transparency, because I hear it from all the parents. I haven't been to a meeting yet where I haven't heard parents say, tell me what the transparencies are, what are the pros and the cons? Help me understand both sides of it. And certainly, you know, our parents do, and our community does to a degree, but not enough. And that has got to be wrapped in with the data. What are the benefits? What are the disadvantages? And what do we tangibly stand to gain by moving forward with such a change versus not?
I guess I'm a little bit confused as to how we make these things tangible. I'm getting some negative vibes here that make me a little bit nervous, because I've attended a number of these public sessions, I think I've been to four presentations at the junior high school. I've been to four site council meetings this week, and granted, that's not the largest percentage of the population in the Olathe community, but certainly, they are people who care a lot about our schools, otherwise, they wouldn't be on the site councils, and they're very involved in our schools. So I think that it behooves us to listen to those people, listen to the questions that they're asking, because they are the messengers in our community. And if we feel good about moving ahead with this study and getting some specifics about how this would look, then I think that we need to be upbeat about it. And yeah, you are down on what you're not up on, but gosh, what I've been hearing from people is that theoretically, they like the ideas, and so I think we should put some pencil to the paper and come up with some ideas of what this would look like in a very upbeat fashion. As far as what is positive about this, I've got a card that I carry around with me now when I go to these site council meetings to talk with folks about what is positive about this. Now, I don't have numbers to say we're going to increase our kids' GPA X amount, we're going to increase our ACT scores X amount. That's the goal here, and we see that there are some things that we could do with this plan that would make that happen possibly. But we've talked about the improvement in academics for all students. I alluded to that a little bit earlier with students being able to get deeper into particular subject areas. That's not just our higher achieving students, that's all of our students. You don't have to be a 4.0 student to take four years of French or four years of Spanish. Anyone can do that, and likewise with English, they're required to take English all through those years, and this gives them the opportunity to get deeper into those subject areas, and ultimately, I think we will see some greater gains in ACT scores. I don't know whether there'll be greater gains in GPA. I would hope it would improve our graduation rate, because there would be a larger intensity and more of a buy-in from students. Other positives are the fine arts and the opportunities this would create for students to improve their abilities in those areas. On Tuesday night, I was at Olathe South for the junior high choral concert and to hear the honor choir. Oh my gosh, was incredible what those kids are doing, and these were ninth graders for the most part. I don't know that they were all ninth graders in the honor choir, but it was just incredible. And so for those kids to be exposed to higher achievement levels in vocal music, the same would be true with orchestra and with band, with debate. I've heard some parents say in some of these meetings that I've gone to, that when their kids go to debate tournaments, particularly those kids who are in ninth grade, they feel like they're at a disadvantage because they're not in with the high school students on a regular basis. I don't see anything wrong with encouraging students to improve their abilities and be motivated to do other things. I don't know that we necessarily need to call it higher achievement, but maybe call it greater involvement, again, going deeper into subject areas. Clubs, I think it's great for ninth grade students to have involvement in a lot of clubs that are offered at the high school level that they're not going to get at the junior high level. Sports, similar situation. Certainly, there are some negatives with sports because of the number of students in our school district and the number of students in our high school. We can't do anything about that, unfortunately, but we can create some intermural programs and get kids involved in that direction. But that is the nature of a large high school. I had an extensive conversation with a parent over at Mahaffey Elementary, works for one of the major construction companies here in Kansas City, and he's from Iowa originally, he and his wife both, and they went to a high school that had about 200 students in the high school, and they're greatly concerned about what kind of opportunities are going to be available for their kids in the Olathe School District and these high schools. And he said, you know, we're going to have to make a decision, and we're not sure what we want to do. And he said, can you tell me what opportunities are going to be available for my kids? And I had to be honest with him and say, you know what? There are going to be opportunities for your kids in every arena, with the possible exception of sports because of the size of our schools. But I said, we're looking at creating some additional opportunities for those kids through the intermural programs. And he nodded, and he said, you know, that's the same decision we came to. So I think that we need to look at the positive aspects of this and what all of our students can gain from these types of opportunities. And the only other thing I would add to that is that we've heard from our parents who have kids in school right now. There are some apprehensions, and I understand those apprehensions. If I were in that position, I would be apprehensive as well. But you need to listen to folks like me, who've had kids there, and there are a number of us out in the community, a lot of us in the community, and we see the benefits that would have been there for our kids if we had had this kind of an arrangement, and we can support this kind of an arrangement because of what additional opportunities would have been available to our kids. Not that they didn't get a great education and they didn't participate in a lot of things, but there would have certainly been some improvements had we been in a configuration like this. So I would just encourage us to go into this with a very positive upbeat attitude that we're going to find a way that we think we can make this happen in the Olathe School District. If we put it all together and it doesn't work, I understand, but I think we need to be positive at looking at it.
And I appreciate those comments, Ms. Ashley. I take exception to the word, there's negativity going on here, because there's not, there's a lot of positive going on. But I think it would be a miscalculation for us to lull ourselves into the fact that we haven't canvassed the community and we haven't answered all the questions. And success comes from there being a certain point of skepticism and answering all the questions, because we don't need to look too far from people who went euphoric into situations only to see it never to materialize. And so that's what I'm advocating. I certainly am not advocating negativity in any manner. We say we're data-driven, and I think we need to get that data. It's incumbent upon us to do it. I've heard lots of parents ask for it. They don't ask for that in a negative way, they just ask for that so they can be informed. And anybody in the room here can correct me, because I don't claim to be a debate expert, but I believe we have the number two debate team in the country, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, once again, lots of positives going on here in the district, but as a governance board, we have the obligation to ask the tough questions and be the fiduciary responsibility before we go before the citizens, that we've checked all the boxes and asked all the questions. And if we're going to be data-driven, then I think we need to adhere to that. But I do, Ms. Ashley, certainly welcome your views.
Having been a longtime member of this community, I'll take a, and we all listen to, I guess we all hear different voices throughout the community, and so I guess I'll take the positive tact from the other direction. To make a change, to me, you know, almost requires overwhelming evidence that whatever we change to will be better than where we are now. The things that, questions that need to be answered in my head are, you know, we've got the 21st century programs, if you've been to any of those programs that the 21st century program offers, you see the tremendous opportunity for our kids that we're providing already. You know, we do have the second debate team in the nation, we have the, you know, we have so many different, you know, positives. Our ACT scores rank up with everybody, all of our benchmarking districts, you know. If we, I guess the questions I would want to have asked also is, if we spend the same amount of time that's going to take to make the change, you know, on improving what we've already got going for us, what can be the results there? You know, change is can be a good thing, but change is not always necessarily a good thing. You know, we can look at all the, a lot of different programs in the education community. You know, we, you know, we switched to the, from middle schools to junior highs 25 years ago. Olathe's done very, very well in the present community we've got, what we've had outcome-based education, we've had all sorts of things in the education community. And so therefore, I'm not saying that change is not a good thing, but I think we need to look at it very, very carefully. In the community, we're all aware that Mr. Churchman has accumulated some data that says there's a lot of people that are against it. Now, right or wrong, that is a voice that needs to be listened to, and I'm not sure we've listened to it. And somehow, as well as going down to look at the schools that are doing the middle school, somehow, we need to find out a way to find, get that voice to come out and make themselves heard, because, you know, I think as Mr. Churchman has alluded to, that's going to be the voting public also. So we need to make sure that we have listened to their voice. I'm proud of what our, you know, school district has accomplished. One of the things I've taken a look and heard in the presentations, and it took me a while to figure out what I was looking at, we've looked at a snapshot of what the benefits will be for the sixth and ninth graders. Let's look at the end result, that's what we're all here for, is the end result, and that's those seniors going on. You know, I don't see that our, you know, how any of our students have suffered with the programs that we offer, you know, and somebody would have to, you know, those are the questions that are in my mind. How have we suffered? How have our kids suffered from the programs we've got now? And, you know, what will be the improvement in ACT scores? What will be the improvement of other, you know, factors that we use to judge the success of our education system? So, you know, the input that we've gotten from the bond test force, you know, we couldn't do, make a decision without it, and I appreciate all the efforts been into it, but I do think there are other voices that we need to make sure that we have listened to, and somehow, we've got to find a way to get to them.
Don't have an interest in cutting off debate and discussion, but if there are not any more comments, I would like to ask Dr. All if she would kind of wrap things up for us on what she has heard from us tonight and what our next steps might be.
Well, I've taken the notes three different times. So I'm going to try to paraphrase back some of the things I've heard, and then I'd like some clarification, because I want to make sure that my staff and I are moving in the direction that the board wants us to move in, so that we don't come back in a month or two months or three months and we've not hit the target, so to speak, of where this board wants us to invest our time, resources, and focus. So with that, first of all, in terms of what I've heard tonight, I have Laura Lee Baker has very dutifully written down all the questions that were asked, so we will do our follow-up to those questions to the best of our ability. So that's one piece of our follow-up. I also heard quite a bit of discussion about data, both on outcomes and what can be expected. This is not a discussion that's new for tonight. I think it's been somewhat challenging in defining what that data is and what we can predict versus what we could possibly improve versus what we can promise in terms of outcomes that aren't defined. that aren't defined. So I want to, you know, have a little more clarity about what that would look like to be satisfactory to the Board of Education. I mean, I would like to have that discussion tonight, a little bit in that area. I think we can perhaps define further the connection between, I think we've used the word "access" a lot, to coursework, and I heard discussion tonight from Ms. Ashley and others about, you know, the depth of preparation. But also, there is a high correlation, and I'm asking this question sort of rhetorically, there's a high correlation between what students enroll in in high school and how long they are in that coursework and the outcomes and level of preparation. And I guess my question would be, is that the data the board is looking for? Is that, is that data? Because in my head, it is, because there's a high correlation between preparation, years of experience in coursework, and the kinds of coursework, and the preparation of the faculty in teaching that coursework. But that's, it's a little, it's not as linear, you know, as we might like. So I would like a little more conversation about that. I do agree, and I think it was said tonight, that to, I've listened to many of these presentations that I could probably give, I couldn't do it as well as Dr. Banakowski does, because I can't flip the slides that well or reference the pages. But it has taken a Herculean effort to spend the time that we've had with our community members in a highly engaged conversation that I think has been very positively received overall, but it does take quite a bit of conversation. And so there are a lot of voters out there that won't have the benefit of that conversation. And we have the DVD on the website, we have the information on the website. And so I think it is a challenge we have, if you're talking about a significant change, how do you bridge that understanding by our parent leaders and others to the voter out there? Because this has to be a voter decision, not fully a board decision, because it has facility implications. I mean, that's, that's the unique thing about this piece, because as facility implications, voters, non-parents, non-educators, and others will be helping make the decision for, right or wrong, for the future of this district. And that is a significant challenge that I worry about, and I know the board's worrying about on this particular area. I'm fully convinced if we could tell the story, that there would be a lot of people that would support this. But at the same time, I'm not sure, you know, what's the best method to do that. I do think we can, and I would have to have a little more time to think about this, I do think we can do some, maybe, surveying to get to some of the voices that Mr. Pollan was talking about tonight. And I would want to do that in a way that we felt like we would have good findings off of that as well, maybe sampling, you know, sort of the level of interest of this, both from those people who might have heard or have direct experience with education and those who are not. I would like to have the board's permission to think about that and research that as a piece of information that would be provided for the board. I also heard tonight, discussion on the board's part, that individuals wanted a picture and felt like a picture of what sixth grade could look like in Olathe, the Olathe way, maybe even what six, seven, eight could look like, because that has a different focus, both in terms of some of the things we would want to make sure we preserved in Olathe and some of the things maybe we would have an opportunity here to do, and then also specifically what ninth grade would look like here. I mean, I heard that pretty strongly from you. And if I heard that correctly, then I would want to know, is it the board's expectation that we would go forward and try to put some design teams together, like we did with 21st Century Programming, to really pull some representative stakeholders together? Key professionals in the district, parents, community members or others who might have a stake in this, to say, what's the best possible program that we could design and afford in each of these areas to bring back to the board and to the community to take a look at? And I think that's something, you know, we don't work in isolation as a, as an administrative team, our principals as leaders, you already heard them talking. I think there are ideas out here, and I just want to say this publicly to the board, I think we can design that model with input from others. And I don't think, I think with a few months, we could have a design to come back that would give a picture, if that's what you want us to do. Because I do think that picture would be helpful. I think it, it almost has to be there. We had a lot of good faith effort when we went after 21st Century High Schools. We did some preliminary work. The board had a lot of confidence in staff to pull together design teams, but actually, you know, we were building as we were flying that plane at the same time. I'm not saying that's the way to do it, but that's the way we did. We have some experience, I think Allison pointed that out, in making successful changes in this district. So I would want to promise the board, to the best of our ability, and you don't have to accept this just based because I've said it, but that this staff and our community, I think, on whatever initiative we went forward, would do our very best with our experience to create something that everyone would, would be proud of and that would, would advance this district forward in sort of, in sort of taking care of this, or taking advantage of this opportunity. On the other hand, it will take some work, it will take some time, but I think we have people willing and ready to do that, if the board desires. So again, just to kind of, the data piece, you know, what does that look like? Outcomes, preparation, you know, what are we talking about there? Making sure we address your correct questions, surveying or finding some way to make, and get some voices that would get that back to the board, as discussed tonight, is what I heard. And then I think the other piece that I'm not sure how to explain, and maybe this is more of an insider look than an outside look, is that when I look at the organizational and system levels in this district, it's, in companies and organizations, you have to look at your delivery system, and what is the cost-effective way to get the best experiences and the access to those experiences in a cost-effective way? And there are, you know, some cost benefits to looking at it from a systems point of view in terms of how we're organized. And I think that's the other piece tonight that I think Dr. Banakowski mentioned, that we need to think a little bit more about. Those of us who've lived in the junior highs, we live in two worlds. We live in a seventh, eighth grade world, which is at the upper end of elementary, and we live in the first 25% of a high school education in that same world. And that's the bridge we've made in Olathe since 1979, when I came here, and Olathe was that way, probably a couple of decades before. And that has always, you know, we've done our workarounds. We bus freshmen to the high school every day for athletics. We're running buses every single day. We've done some workarounds, because most of the sports are available at the high school, the soccer, baseball, swimming, wrestling, on and on. So we've made some of those workarounds, and we can continue to do that. But if we have the opportunity to design that ninth grade program and the sixth grade, I think we're ready to do that. I think another issue that has to be recognized and we have to wrestle with if we were to go forward with this, and that is how we could design that and minimize the concerns about a larger high school. And that's, I mean, I'm just laying that out on the table. That is one of the challenges and the concerns that I think is, to speak to what Mr. Churchman mentioned before, and maybe unspoken from others, you know, that's something that has to be addressed in any kind of design. How are we going to accommodate that in the best interest of all the students in that high school? And to me, I would lay that out as another criteria that we would need to solve before the board would be able to make a final decision. So those are my reflections. Another, my last comment would be, we've discussed this, some of you individually, I'd like to see us take several months here and let the staff and myself, kind of with whatever guidance you want to give us, work on some of these things, and not necessarily come back in December to meet on, on the bond right now, but to do some work following up of our previous big chunk study sessions, both in this area. And then secondly, to do some really good work, to see what we can accomplish with various bond package scenarios to reduce the price options on that, and see how much we can begin to address in a bond package as we go forward with maybe a capital improvements plan for the next 10 years. And see what we can have as options in this bond package, knowing that we cannot probably take care of everything. And if we had a little time to work on those two things right now, I think we could come back in early winter, and I think we have time to do this right. You know, we don't have to rush to a decision in January, February. We have time to do this right. We may not have unlimited time, but I think we have time to do this right, to come back with, with both of those items for you for a study session a little bit later down the road. Now, I would just like some feedback on my reflections, to make sure if I'm getting it or not getting it.
Dr. All, some thoughts back. And I'll start with the data piece first, because that seems to be garnering a lot of discussion. I would look to you and the staff to say, what data is available? And some, as you indicated, is linear, some is less so. But just, it would be helpful to come back and say, here's what we have. Here's what we're able to glean from the benchmark districts. I'm sure it's not going to be Nirvana as to what we might ideally want to see, but it would be helpful to say, here's what we do have, and let's concentrate on that. Point number one. I think your suggestion about a capital improvement plan that spans an appreciable period of time is absolutely the right thing to do. And then in concert with that, some recommendations that we can start to build is, what will the bond have to bear out of that? You know, what load will a bond offering have to, have to take from the capital improvement plan versus what other alternative funding options can we move forward with? One, to do things quicker, and two, to just be more financially prudent. The survey idea in my mind, across the community, is an outstanding idea. It's a, it's a piece I think we need to do. I think we should solicit the experts to look at, how is it that we can potentially look at breaking the question into various piece parts, instead of just one big lump offering in front of the public? I don't know if that's the right answer or not, but can we look at that? And it goes back to, I believe completely, that if people can get their hands around what's in it for me, and they can see what it's going to do to their school and their portion of the community and their, and their area of focus, whether it's the fine arts, which are extremely important, or whether it's other areas that may be important to them, they will tend to support that. So to the extent that we could get some, some data on that, I also think the board should be involved in what those communications look like and have some input on it. So those are my thoughts.
Dr. All, some comments in regards to your questions. I thought back to a couple of things. I look at our Board of Education's strategic directions. One of them is student learning, continuously improve learning and achievement. So the question is, how does this lead us in that direction? Innovation, encourage and promote a climate of creativity. How does this answer that strategic direction? Community involvement and organizational climate, sustain caring relationships to enhance community ownership and involvement. How do we answer that? Is it, are we, are we going in that direction? And in resource allocation, acquisition allocation, maximize resources, support strategic directions. Then I go back to our interview with you when we were selecting a superintendent. And something that you said resonated with me and still resonates today, and you said that you wanted to lead us to be the best in class. How does this get us there? Show us. Show us a plan of execution that this will lead us to be the best in class, to be the best school district in the nation. And then I think back in 1999, I had just come onto board, seven years ago, seven quick years. And we were sitting here, and we were talking about the 21st Century Programs. We didn't know what it looked like. We didn't know what it was going to look like. And I remember saying that it's a risk. We're going to spend a lot of money. We have, we've spent a lot of money, took a risk. We cast the vision, and we can turn around and look back and say, it was worth the risk, and we have fulfilled the vision. And I think we could say the same thing about this. It's a risk, but let's cast the vision, and if we cast the vision and we do a good job of community involvement, organizational climate, the community will catch the vision.
Mr. Parker, if I could follow up on that. Dr. All, we're asked a question of us, is it time for, to put a design team together to show us what this might look like? You know, to me, that's one of the issues we're struggling with in all this, is we're almost saying, vote for this and trust us that we'll design it right, and not that we're not to be trusted, but that's a pretty big ask. So I personally am, would like, even though I know it's going to take staff, resources, time to do this, I'm one of those who would be in favor of some type of a design team put together to begin to show us and the public what this looks like, because it's so hard to get our arms around it otherwise. And to me, that gets to the issue, I think, Mr. Churchman, that you're addressing of the broader public, not just those who are necessarily involved in our schools today, but those who maybe are not or have been in the past, whose children are older, of what that looks like. So I would speak in support of that, and I would be interested to know if there's anyone else feels the same way or has objection to that.
I would also be, and I think we talked about it early even in your presentation, Dr. Banakowski, about a design team and looking at the reality of what parents have asked us to do, and that is, what does it look like? There's a lot of information in your report, and it was done very quickly tonight, because there is, because you've given a lot of that information. But when we talk about some of the challenges that are there, some of those are addressed in that report. So what I, I would ask that design team to look carefully at some of what has been addressed that may be hidden in, in this report, number one. Number two, Dr. All, when you talked about the impact of larger high schools, I know that the infrastructure may be part of that consideration, but I truly believe that if a design team, that may be part of what that design team needs to address too. And that is, if it's set up in a way in which our freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors are working in professional learning communities, in teams, then I don't know that that's going to be as big of an issue as we may think it would be. Obviously, the infrastructure has to be considered, but what's a bigger consideration is how our education for our students is delivered and how the support for our students is given.
Mr. Gilmore, I would wholeheartedly support the design concept.
I would support the design concept, but I would like somebody to give me a definition of what we're designing. What is the end result we're trying to accomplish? We, you know, we look down the years 2013, 2014. What, we're going to put a design on the table, what is the end result of, when a kid starts in sixth grade, or starts in first grade and ends up as a senior in our high schools, and he graduates, that's the end result I'm looking for. What are we going to get? How can we get it from a middle school concept? How can we get it from what we got now? How would it differ? You know, I'm, you know, the design team to me is assuming that we've said already that this is the best way to do it. I still have struggle in my mind that, you know, the change is necessary because of all the great things we've already done in our school district. We've got 2,000 kids moved in the last two years. They, I don't know why they moved in, but we've accomplished an awful lot with them. So I'm really struggling with, yeah, I'm all in favor of a design team, but I'm not sure what we're telling them to design. And I'd like to have a definition of that. And to me, that, the definition of that is, what do we accomplish when those seniors graduate from high school? What have we accomplished with them?
Mr. Pollan, and I want to kind of bridge these two things here, because I've got to have a plan here before I take all these people down this path, and see if this would work in your mind. Number one, what I heard before you spoke was that, based on the questions that, that people had when they have either heard the presentation, we've talked about this, the sense that we needed to have a design or a model for what six, seven, and eight would look like, and moving ninth grade into the high school. So I heard that. So I, I heard that prior to that. But then I also heard you say, for you, and I think for all of us would be a good point, is what could we expect differently, which we would assume is an improvement, for the student leaving our system at the end of 12th grade? And if the design team, because to, to just talk about that without doing the design, we're back where we are right now. But if we, if we could somehow tackle both of those, so that the design team, I'm talking about what they're charged with as a responsibility, is maybe we need to identify some, some purpose statements, some outcome statements for the design team and their mission work, is one for them to really look at sort of that exit of our student and what differences we would be intending to make. And then secondly, what it would take in terms of the design of a reconfiguration. And I think you heard tonight, there was just a little hint that came in here from our principals, of some opportunities we might be able to seize as it relates to our early adolescent children, six, seven, and eight, that is probably the one level we haven't taken a close look at for some time. So that's, I'm trying to figure out how to do both of what I'm being asked to do tonight. Now, when I just said that to you, did that make sense, or am I missing your intent?
You caught my intent. The, what we've said about putting a design team has been focused totally on looking at a middle school arrangement. It has not focused one bit whatsoever on, can we accomplish the same thing with what we've already got? And maybe can we build on what we've already got to get to the same place and have some of the same advantages? You know, we, we do look at things the Aletha way. How many, how many other school districts have 21st Century Programs? How many of them, you know, have the successes we've got? Is, you know, are we looking to other school districts to emulate them, when, when we know that most of the other school districts are emulating us? And I, I see a reason for that, and I guess I, I am not ready to give up on what we've got.
Mike, let me, let me wade into the water here, because I've, I've been going in my mind about how I want to say this, and I'm not there. So I'm going to just blab it out, and hopefully I'll communicate. So bear with me. You know, as I've tried to put my arms around all of this, speaking to what outcomes we're trying to get, Dr. All, with what, what design team might do, let me throw this out there and see if this makes sense. Proposing a ninth grade moving to the high school, what we're saying is, hey, principals and all of you teachers at that level, would you rather have four years or three years with the students that you're charged with getting to graduate and prepare for college or technical careers, or whatever it might be? And I think the answer is that is, well, you prefer four years. Okay, why? Answer the question, why, versus what we're doing today? Why is that better than what we're doing today? And how does, what does that look like?
Why, and what, what results?
And what results might we expect? Because if the answer to that is, well, we can do it, and we're going to have basically the same results we have today, then we come back to, well, then why change? Well, that, there's a second part to this. We have facilities issues, which is where this whole thing started with the Bond Task Force. If we're not accomplishing greater academic achievement or better preparing students for their future, as Mr. Parker started to allude to with our objectives and our goals, then it becomes a financial decision. Are we better off continuing to build more elementary schools, or do we shift things around so we don't have to build as many facilities, or perhaps spend as much in terms of capital dollars and all the interest that gets added on every time we do a bond issue? So that's, to me, is a second consideration. And if we can't adequately answer it to one of those two levels, then I'm back to, there's no reason to change. But I do think there's two levels upon which we can make a decision to move forward or not. One is strictly the academic achievement, and we can deal with the financial issues aside from that. Or if there's not necessarily a whole bunch of academic achievement, and I, and I'm not saying there isn't, then does it become a financial issue that we can wrestle with and say, well, it makes more sense to do it this way? Does that help? And I would hope that a design process would help to flesh that out a bit.
I truly believe also that, that by going with a design team, what we're going to discover is, it's, it's taking an inside look again, which I think I heard people say earlier, maybe this hasn't been done in a while. But even if we don't change the configuration of where we're going, I think it starts through the design team process, is asking some of the questions that maybe we haven't asked ourselves as educators in a while, about even seventh and eighth grade programs, and even our ninth grade programs. So I see benefits to it, and staff has to have some headaches by now, by us saying that, because you're the ones that are going to be doing the work, but in a lot of ways. But I do see benefits for us to do this, because it will provide several answers. And in fact, it may, the results of those answers may make us even more a quality district in the kind of education we're providing children than we are even now.
Dr. Banakowski, earlier tonight, talked about good to great. One of the principles in that book is the need for every great organization to constantly reinvent itself. And, and reinventing itself can be done under a number of different premises. And it goes back to what I heard from Mr. Katz of here earlier in the week, whether or not we do or we don't, we need to change. And, and I agree with that. So I think that by going through a design phase like this, the points Mr. Pollan brings up are absolutely right, and what Mr. Gilmore says is right. But I think only good things will come out of it, one way or the other.
Dr. All, have we touched on all the issues? Mr. Pollan?
You, you asked me a question, Kevin, and so I was just going to answer it. I think you pretty well caught what, you know, what I was trying to say, and the fact that there needs to be some overwhelming reasons for making the change, you know, because I, I just, you know, I look at the success of this school district, I don't know what we're ashamed of, that we think we need to, that we need to change, that we can't build from what we've already got. We've got a pretty solid foundation, and, you know, I'm, you know, I'm not averse to change, but give me some good reasons.
Dr. All, are there any other issues that you, you spouted off several things that I don't know that I wrote them all down, but have we touched them all yet?
Laura Lee, did you get most of what we said? We can always review the, the tape.
...........................................................................
And then I would add the piece that Mr. Pollan, and we've just recently discussed about not only the design of the delivery system, but what's the expected results and outcomes there. And then also, the piece that Kevin, Mr. Gilmore brought up about the, sort of the financial side of this, and what does that look like, and what are the benefits there, and what are the, the costs, if I, if I captured that right? I, I would add one other thing that I think, from, from an inside perspective, someone who's been in this district a long time, and I want to make this very clear, because, you know, I know Mr. Pollan is proud of this district, as is every other board member, and so am I. I, I've been a part of it. We, you know, so what we have, we own. I own too, because I've been a part of it, the good, the bad, and maybe the areas that need to be improved. And I don't think we have very much bad here. I think we have mostly good, and we have a lot of great. I think what the question comes down that I wrestle with is, is the organizational system, and this is sort of more systems talk, is the organizational system for how we're using our resources and, and accessing teachers and accessing coursework and delivering education? And I would phrase it, is organizing it to deliver 25 percent of a high school education across eight, possibly nine junior highs? Is that the organizational model that is best operationally, effectively, efficiently over time? And so there's a systems piece here that, that I think maybe we need to talk a little bit more about, that, that, that I question as an, as an inside person, in terms of how we're getting resources to improve, and, and how to make some of those decisions. So, you know, I would like to add that on the table of our discussion a little bit more, if that's okay with the board.
Okay. Well, I believe we've reached the end of our agenda and exhausted everything we ever wanted to say. Thank you all for your time tonight. It's been a great discussion. Thank you, Dr. Banakowski, for your presentations. We really appreciate all the efforts that you've put into this, and it's really helping us to move forward with all this process. So with that, we're adjourned. Good night.